We'll open the meeting at 6:02. Do we have any adjustments to the schedule? Or the agenda, I guess.
I just wanted to go, well, no, it's on the agenda, the remote access.
Okay.
I can't think of anything.
I don't have anything either.
Okay. All right. Public comments? We're at loss for public comments, okay. Approving the bills, I guess we'll approve those by signing, I haven't reviewed them yet.
Yeah, I haven't either.
And then the minutes.
Those approved by signing. And the minutes.
I had one comment on the minutes and it's not a typo because I know we had the conversation, but I realized that what was commented on, we can't actually do. It's on the, so if we vote, if this firehouse thing passes this year, it has to be paid in the 2023 budget because we can't commit to future meetings.
We have not budgeted any of that.
No, I got it, but it, well, it's, if it passes, then it would have to be just incorporated in the tax rate when they figure the tax rate.
Yes. But on a typical, right, so it won't be in person when it's calculated.
Right, you'd know by, by the end of April and then it would just be figured into the tax rate. I'm just saying, we can't do this. Because we, as an organization, we can't commit future town. We can't, I can't vote a year ahead, is what I'm saying. So although, I remember having the conversation, but then I looked at it and said, we can't do that.
We can't do that, okay.
So if it passes, it would be paid in the 2023.
What we should do is make that amendment and then you, you just write it in as it should be and read it to us and we will approve the minutes as amended. And I can make the change on the computer tomorrow and I'll send it down to you, Robin. So technically, we could sign, well, it's on the same page that we're signing, so.
So what we would do is just, we cross that out and just place "to be paid" in FY 2023.
Does it have the sum of money that's going to be paid?
Well, I don't have the article, it was eighty.
It's eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand, okay, I don't want to misquote it, but. I mean, we have to warn the meeting, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, we can't represent that we were doing something that we can't actually do.
We can't do.
Right, okay. Did you kind of catch that? Just hand it. I think we just created it, say "to be paid."
Okay.
Yeah, because I realize it's not an article, it was no different than the last time we did it. We did it, it was in a year, budget year, so it just would have to be.
It was just like.
If it passes, it would be considered in the, when they calculate the tax rate. Okay. That's the only change, so other than that, I'll entertain a motion to amend the minutes as a, approve the minutes as amended, there we go.
All right, so I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I want my mask on. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
You don't need to read it as you've changed it?
Oh, have her read it.
So I'll, I'll remove my motion. Motion to approve is removed.
What it says, it crossed out the line that talked about which year and it just simply says[207.75][207.78]"to be paid" in the FY 23 budget.
Okay.
So it'll read as Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department to vote on fire emergency operations center to be paid in fiscal year 2023 budget.
Because that's the only legal thing we can do.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to approve the amended version of the budget.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, get past it. All right, Town Clerks' Report.
The last couple of weeks have been very busy with absentee ballots. We have sent out 155 absentee ballots and of that, so far, I have gotten 69 back.
Wow, that's good.
Great.
Yeah, and I think we will be voting tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
And I turned the water on and it's working.
Thank you.
Hopefully it won't freeze tonight.
I hope not. It's five degrees out. Just so you know Chuck, it's five degrees out. You can, you can feel bad for us.
Not much, no.
No.
I'm not feeling bad at all.
And I got an email, it was the 25th, but I actually got it today. The Woodbury 2022 Mileage Certificate has not been received.
Right, that's still on my list to do.
Okay.
All right.
And actually, I've been trying to find the name of the person that sent that, so if I, if you could forward that to me or then I'll.
For any of us, actually, all of us?
Yes. It was, she sent last year's to me and you know, the mileage hasn't changed at all, so I had requested that the last year's be sent, so I could just write in the number of miles on the 2022 certificate. And I haven't been able to find that email.
And Mr. Erikey, do you have support for people in person tomorrow to?
To vote, to help with voting.
Help with voting?
Yes. Last meeting, both you and Michael said, Chris and Michael said, that they would help vote at seven o'clock tomorrow night.
Yes.
Is that still a vote?
Still good to help count.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're good with ballot clerks for the day?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, perfect.
Yeah, Diana came in today and was a little nervous, so she called a few more people to help vote for tomorrow night.
Okay.
We can't be both though, right? We can't be both. We can't, we can't be both.
You can, you can collect ballots and count.
You can be a ballot clerk and also collect ballots at the end of the night.
Okay.
We just have to take all your writing utensils.
Everything I can get. All right, fair enough.
Okay, is that all, Robin?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. Town Treasurers' Report.
Yes. Over the last two weeks, payroll was $9,081.53. AP was $8,895.45. Income out of cash receipts, we had a $100 donation toward the Sylvia Jackson Fund. Delinquencies, $5,504.15. Today, I transferred $8,000 from the money market over into checking. Two weeks ago, I received the Cabot Road reimbursement for $65,944.58. So I made a transfer over to the money market of $65,000.
Great.
Other than that.
How's the shoulder?
It's good in there.
Getting there?
Lots of heat. Can't go that high yet.
I went through what you did.
Takes a long time.
Been there, done that.
It's a long time.
Questions?
I don't have any.
I don't either.
We got the check, so we can't complain about that. All right, well, somebody probably will.
We'll see.
Okay. We're on, you're on Chuck.
Okay. Just to let you know, Greg and I talked and we don't have any culverts on hand, so we ordered two 18s and two 24s to have on hand, because we got one this spring that I'm afraid we're going to have to change early. On the county road, I mean, excuse me, Cranberry Meadow. So that will be, I know we hit the culvert fund pretty hard last year, but I don't know what else we can do on that.
Got to have it, you got to have it.
Yeah, and Mike sent me an email about people in West Woodbury being concerned that Hardwick was not going to plow the roads up there anymore. Mike, David and I from Hardwick have been talking and all we got to, we, when I get home, we'll set a meeting up and just lay out what we're figuring for guidelines, so everybody, and put it in writing, so that everybody knows what's going on. And as I see it, unless you, the Woodbury Select Board has a problem with it, it's going to continue the way it has been.
Right, which we do have in writing, you all got a copy of that.
We do have a copy of that.
Yep, the old one.
Yeah, the, the old version of it, we already have established, right Chuck? We, we have a version from what, three years ago?
Yeah.
I don't have any idea about that.
No, I, Skip, I'll send it to you Chuck when I get back home, because I found one, someone, Skip sent it to me.
Lindsey sent it, yeah.
Okay.
That might be helpful to you. I didn't realize you didn't have it.
I think I did.
No, I didn't know anything about that, that was done before I started, so.
Me too, but Skip Lindsey found it.
I did send it to Chuck.
Okay, cool. Good. And other than that, I guess the roads are breaking up some.
Well, they froze up solid this weekend.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Ruts in different places that are now frozen solid.
It's going to be below zero every night all this week, so we're good till next week. Then it's going to rain Monday, Tuesday next week.
Yeah, I'm afraid when it opens, it's going to be full moon season.
It is.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't have much, but if anybody talks to anybody out of West Woodbury, you can reassure them that things are pretty much going to stay the way they are, to my knowledge.
Yeah. I, I did send an email to, Jack Travelstead is the person that contacted me about the rumors going around up there, he, he lives in West Woodbury and after getting a confirmation from you, because I'm remembering from the last meeting where you had mentioned that you had been talking with David Upson and everything was going to stay the same, I, and then you confirmed that, I told, told Jack to let people up there know, so we should, we should be good.
The word may be a little different, but it'll be good to have that when you send it to me, so I'll be able to show it to Dave, tell him.
I can do that, I'll.
Yeah, so, but I mean, he's all gone home for it, I mean, I'm pretty sure that we're going to get it worked out and things stay the way they are. Other than that, I guess I don't have much else.
Okay, all right. You guys got anything for Chuck?
Nope, thanks Chuck. I, I did want to let you know, I had a conversation with David Upson quite a while ago after the Meyer family, I think it was Nick Meyer especially, who's basically running the Cahagan thing up on Nichols Pond these days.
Yeah.
And he, Nick was asking if the road crew could plow up to the, to where the road goes down to Nichols Pond Dam. And I guess he had, I told him to speak with David Upson, because Hardwick does plow that road. And David Upson has agreed, and this will be part of the mutual aid agreement, I would assume, he would like to plow up to the Nichols Pond Road to help out their business. He figures that if, you know, that's a business where people that are staying there, because they're keeping one cabin open for snowmobilers, that they're going to come into Hardwick to spend their money, so you know.
I think he's right.
Yeah, yeah, so they really can't spend it in Woodbury, so. So he, he wants to, he wants to help them keep that road open and I don't know if he's talked to you about that, but that's.
We, we talked on it and I told him that Greg and I would go up in the spring and look things over, it's going to take a fair amount of work to get that where they can keep it plowed.
Yeah, okay.
It's wide enough, but it's going to take probably three to four culverts across the road and a tremendous amount of gravel.
Okay.
Keep that from turning right to one big mud hole. Now, is there, can you get grants for class four roads?
But if we, if it was hydrologically connected, which I can check out, we could use the municipal road general permit, because we are responsible for erosion on class four roads.
Well, there's definitely some erosion down through there, the water runs right down the middle of the road.
Right down the road, yeah, I know, yeah.
Half a mile.
Yeah, and it does kind of run into kind of a wetland brook area. I will look and see how A and R has designated those segments of road.
Yeah, the classification is that it should be, as of right now.
Yeah.
But we can take a look. I'll take a look too.
We'll, we'll check that out.
All right, because if not.
You froze.
Yeah. I don't know if that's our connection or.
If it's our connection or.
I think it's, we've got, usually have a pretty good connection here, so. Chuck, you're back.
Yeah, I'm back.
You froze up for a bit, I don't know if you said anything that we didn't hear or not, but.
Well, I asked if you were there and you didn't answer.
Okay.
What I said was, it's going to take a fair amount of dollars to put that road up in shape, where we can keep it plowed.
Yeah, all right. Well, we'll, we'll see if it's, if it's got the A and R blessing for funding.
Well, yeah, well, I told David that we could probably get it where you can plow it the first year, but mud season would be bad, it may take two, three years to get it up into shape.
Mud season, yeah, it's, it's always pretty bad during mud season, especially kind of right in the bottom swell where the water runs to.
Right, yeah, well, there's no, yeah, there's going to be some ditching and some culverts done there, definitely.
Okay, all right.
Okay. You good?
I'm good.
Perfect.
Thanks Chuck.
Thank you Chuck.
Thank you.
So.
We are up to remote equipment, or access equipment laptop purchase.
This is just a brief thing, we did, at our last meeting, we, I mentioned that we did have to get a new laptop for the remote access equipment, which was something that we were thinking that we wouldn't have to do. According to Skip Marcasani, the town clerk's laptop just isn't up, it's old and it isn't up to speed to do what it needs to do. So, so we did purchase that, I think it came to around $750. Did you get a receipt or invoice from Skip about that? You did, okay. I have all the other invoices for all of this equipment.
So the computer was at 750?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean roughly, that's what my memory is from what Skip said it would cost. So, and we talked about the laptop at our last meeting, but we, technically, I think we should have voted to approve it, approve the purchase of it. So I just wanted to share that, that, you know, and our two select board meetings go, the last meeting in the end of January, we voted to approve $1,200 in expenditures for this remote stuff, but with a new laptop, we spent $1,700, $1,702.20.
So I think just give another motion to cover that amount.
I'll make that motion to approve the new amount.
If seventeen.
Okay, 1702.
Yeah, I'll second that and it looks like Brandy has some discussion about it.
Brandy.
So my, my thought was that it was coming out of the ARPA money.
We can use.
So if that is the, I want a motion made, that, that money, so that I can do a journal entry and move it out of the ARPA money, but I want the board and I want the minutes.
We can do that.
We can do that, yes.
I'll need the backup for that when I.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve that we use ARPA funds for the purchase of the new computer at 1702 total.
And the equipment.
For all the equipment.
For all the IT equipment.
So those two purchases.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of all new digital equipment for the purposes of allowing Digital Town forums at 1702 be approved.
And using the ARPA funds.
Using ARPA funds.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, it's no no vote, we're good.
So that, and that's pretty much it.
Jeez, and we're going to go for a world frickin' record here.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I know.
This could be, I've been in this for three years, I've never seen this before, ever.
We, we have.
Somebody call up and yell at me, please.
We have used this equipment pretty extensively since we've got it.
We've used it every time we've had a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic.
And we're getting better with it every time.
And it's definitely 100% ARPA approved.
Yes, and there's one snafu that I'm still trying to figure out, is that we did, we recorded the ARPA informational meeting and then I couldn't send it to Skip Lindsey, it was too much information for an attachment to an email.
You'd have to zip it or put it in like a OneDrive and then you could.
Yeah.
Well, I do my big files, I go into OneDrive or, or Google Drive and you can place a file there and give someone permission to access it there.
Which we don't have an account for right now, so maybe we should consider that.
Maybe you should get a Google Drive.
We might want to do that, because I.
Because that's the only way you can do those files.
It did suggest that I do OneDrive and, and that didn't work and I do.
I use Google Drive and it's really inexpensive.
And Ben Witt came up with another alternative that I haven't tried yet, and then I bought a flash drive, I figured for this thing, I'm just going to get it on the flash drive and walk it over to Skip Lindsey's house.
Have you guys used OneDrive or Google Drive?
I have not.
Yes, both.
Because basically I can, I can send a large file, put it in there and then click that you have permission and then give you the link for it and then you can just go in and access it.
But we should have something like that.
We should.
For the town. It'll be a town, but that's a conversation that we should bring up probably for the not, the next select board.
You and the next two people that get to enjoy that.
That decide to.
Sweet.
So that, that would, that would solve the problem, it sounds like.
It's a conversation that needs to be had amongst the next select board, if we're going to have large digital files, should we have a town account for?
It would make life easier.
Google Drive.
Because it's really the only way to share a large files.
OneDrive.
Pictures and videos.
I spent about an hour and a half.
Yeah, no, you're not going to be, I went through the same thing, I had a client that wanted about 300 pictures and I'm like, hmm, so I finally put it in my OneDrive, we have a OneDrive account for work and we were able to, he could just, it says, you want to have permission for the email receiver to access, you click yes and then they can just open it.
So it could be a relatively easy thing to do, as long as we set it up, we can have one for the select board, one for the town, we could have multiple accounts.
Could we have just one account where?
We could, if we could make it one account, it sounds good.
I mean, that's what we have, we have one Zoom account and, and anybody, any of the groups in town that need to do Zoom meetings use it. So would it be, would that be?
Well, it's reasonable.
Okay.
So one, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to decide how to associate it.
Okay, yeah.
And that's, that's all right, it might have to be through the town clerk.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can decide on that.
I'll skip the next time he comes in and set this up one.
Yeah, the two better ones are OneDrive or Google. Google's the least expensive. It's cheap. If you have a Gmail account, they give you a small one on your own, you got to pay for a bigger file, but.
Well, we can decide on that. But I think that we agree that that's a reasonable approach.
Agreed.
I agree, yeah, whatever makes it easier.
Otherwise, you won't be able to share those videos.
No. The ARPA committee would like to get that on the website, so that people can.
Yeah, we'd like to be able to share large files, so.
And that was a great meeting, I don't know, Paul, it's in, Tegan did a great job recording. Actually, I have CD fiber that she recorded, but they, just so that you know, I think I shared this, I don't think I have shared this at a select board meeting, because it was after the last.
Yeah, it was after the last one.
The, all the municipalities can spend up to $10 million of ARPA funds on anything they want, there are no restrictions.
Anymore.
Anymore. And that, this was in the final rule and obviously, we're never going to get $10 million.
Right.
So. Made it both wonderful and complicated at the same time.
So it looks like Gary Clark's trying to get in, I just noticed that.
Tell them it's almost too late.
Yeah, but actually, there is something I want to bring up, he said, that was an email.
We're in updates and follow-ups now.
Yeah, so Gary, I'm glad you're here. So I, just before the select board meeting tonight, I opened up the laptop and there was an email from Gary, he got a call from somebody on Woodbury Lake, apparently there's an abandoned car at the Fishing Access.
Yep.
I guess now it doesn't have any tires or exhaust or whatever. And the person that called him wants the town to do something about it.
It's a state problem.
Well, that's, that's what I told Gary that I thought was true.
It's a state Fish and Wildlife Department.
That's on state property, that's their problem, not the town's. So I will try to figure out who to notify.
Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Yeah, because it's the fish one.
Hey Mike?
Yeah, Gary.
I just went by there two minutes ago and the car seat's been gone.
Oh.
With no, okay.
Thanks Gary.
Bravo, Sal, you're a miracle worker.
That was easy. All right, okay, well, that was the only other business I have.
I don't have anything else.
I don't have anything else, either. But I would like to say, I have tremendously appreciated the service of both Paul and Michael and the time that I have been on this select board for a short period of time, I've learned a lot and I wish them very well.
We wish you good luck.
Being off of the select board for the town of Woodbury in the future.
Thank you, Chris.
And I wanted to further thank Chris, in particular Michael, how many years did you do?
Eight.
Eight years, so I'm having trouble getting through three. It's a tough job, it's not very pleasant and frankly, one of the reasons it's tough to volunteer for anything in town is all you ever get is complaining, hardly any, everybody ever thanks anybody.
Yeah, yeah. Some people.
We don't always agree, but I am very thankful, I mean, that's what makes our world work, is if we all agreed on everything, I think we'd be in a mess.
Right.
But I think thanking those even for their service, and so I thank you. And we could all learn a lot by learning how to be nicer to each other and how to get along even when we disagree.
Yeah.
We can be polite.
Yeah.
That's my little story.
Very good.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, thank you, Paul, and I appreciate the.
No worries.
Three years. And, and I appreciate the integrity and honesty that you want and, and also give.
I try.
It's been, even though we have disagreed on things.
Do it respectfully.
We have done it civilly.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be, our, our republic doesn't work any other way.
Right.
You know, especially at a town level, it's very hard when all you hear is complaining, you know, and that's unfortunate, but it happens, it's just the nature of the beast.
So I'll make a motion to close the.
Is this going to be a world record?
Close the meeting, I think it might be.
Can you hang on just one minute?
Sure, come up and yell, we need someone to yell at us or something.
No, I don't want to yell at you, I want to thank you and Michael both for your support while I've been there, you booked the excellent to work with and I'm afraid I'm going to miss you deeply.
Okay, well.
Chuck, I am, I am planning on continuing as a town highway administrative assistant with your grace and the new select board's grace, if they would like me to do that, I will continue doing that.
I think it's great, I hope they, I hope the select board agrees.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I like that idea too, and Chuck, I'm happy to start to step in, in Michael's role as best as I can to work with you on town highway work.
Yeah.
Cool, I'm sure you and I won't have any problems.
So some of the things that we've left in the background, I'm sure you want to keep working on Chuck, and I think are important, is the fixing up of the lower part of Valley Lake Road and ultimately getting it paved someday and that, moving that road.
Yes.
One of the parts I don't like about leaving is leaving something undone and, and that's hard for me, because I like to finish things, but it is one of those things that drags on.
We'll follow through on both of those.
Yeah, so just remember to keep that going, because those are good, worthy projects that need to be finished.
Yeah, and this is, this is Chris, but I'm going to have a little bit of time with Paul and Michael to try to understand the priorities of some of the projects.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that Chuck, you're involved in those conversations.
Alright.
Cool, sounds good.
Yeah.
Just to make it easier to translate some of those, those priorities to the next group of folks on the select board.
Right.
Right, well, it's always good when everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, and just to address those two sites that you mentioned, Chuck, we did have the survey done for the bypass on that bad curve on Valley Lake Road, so that's done. Um, and so the new select board will have to find somebody to do the design work.
Right, we got the survey.
We have the survey done.
And then we got to, we should, next thing they need to do is get the road laid out and do that process.
Yep.
It's laid out, I guess, we just got to do the.
Yeah, roughly laid out.
Roughly laid out.
So we got to, we got to get the, you got to do the meeting to get the, to actually take the land.
And the other, um, the, the replacement of the culvert, um, we did get a grant to do that, um, we haven't put together, I haven't put together the, um, RFP for the designer. The V-Trans has suggested, uh, two, uh, three people, three, uh, engineers, anyway, the, the fellows, ruggles that, that we used before.
We've used ruggles, yeah.
Doug Newton, who designed the box culvert on the Nelson Pond Road, and, and then just to get the, a third, um, there's, um. Oh, here's my old brain forgetting, um, they're based down in Montpelier, um, they're usually, uh, really expensive.
The Wolf.
The Wolf, thank you, yeah, that was it, yeah, I had Duble.
And I'll have to work with you on that culvert anyway, because our dry hydrants right there, we'll have to figure out how to incorporate that back into that design.
Yeah, I know, um.
So Paul's not out of the woods yet?
Not out of the woods, and again, I'm willing to help with some of this stuff, you know, yeah, like, I'm willing to work if you need someone to oversee or chase a project down, I'm willing, happy to do that, and then bring it to the board, and let them deal with it.
And I, and we'll still be dealing with District Seven on that, because they're basically, that's the district.
That's our new district.
Yeah, it's actually not our new district, it's our old one, we're in District Six now, but.
But they started.
They, they're the ones that awarded us the grant, so we still.